So you're okay. A little technical difficulties, but we're ready to go. Good afternoon, evening, everybody. This is the annual budget hearing. I'll do my traditional beginning part where I kind of talk about the state of the state or the state of the district. And then I'll turn it over to Matt and he can get into the numbers. And so without further ado, let's just jump right in. Actually, to the sound. As a reminder, folks, sometimes what I like to do when I'm presenting this, when Matt and I are presenting, we're in the community. And sometimes we're presenting to people that they're not really kind of tuned in to what's happening in the district. Maybe they don't have kids here any longer. And so it's an opportunity for us to share kind of some of the things that are happening to build awareness. And I always like to start that out with a little factor. Did you know? Last year's did you know was that Kansai was the oldest school in the state of New York and the eighth oldest in the country. Not a lot of people knew that. This year's fact is Frederick Douglass spoke at the Bemis Block. He gave a West India Emancipation Speech. And I like this quote from him. I pull from it often. If there is no struggle, there is no progress. And I feel like in life and in society, there's been a lot of struggle for many, many years now, but a lot of times that leads to progress. And that's something, it just kind of centers me each time I see it. He gave the speech in the Bemis Block, which is this large building right here that says Bemis Block at the top. You can't really see it, but if you're familiar with Main Street, the building still stands and it still says Bemis Block. And so as rumors have it, there used to be circuses up there and elephants and all kinds of things. And I just like history, so I just wanted to mention that. So jumping in, want to share that our middle school and our academy are receiving the National Unified Champion School recognition. We're actually doing banner ceremony at the middle school this Friday and at the academy next Friday. And why this is important is it's really in reference to the efforts we have around special education and Special Olympics in Canadagua. And so we had to submit evidence of the things that we do for our students with disabilities and to get this recognition. We're the only school in the state of New York that received it for the middle school. And we're the only school in the state of New York that has it in two different buildings in the same district, our academy and our middle school. So we're really excited about the efforts that we have around special education. And we're really looking forward to these banner ceremonies. It's gonna be a lot of fun. We're gonna play a unified basketball game for the whole student population to see at both buildings. It's gonna be great. And so speaking of unified sports, not a lot of people know what they are. And really, they are sports between Canadagua and other schools, other competitors that we're going against. And it's some of our students with an IP. And so students with special needs with our regular and students that don't have an IP or don't have the special IPs. And they take the court, basketball in this photo, and they compete against Newark, against HFL, against airport, you name it. I mean, they go out and play real games with real officials. And it's, if you've never been to one, I ask you to go to one. Your cheeks will hurt from smiling. It's amazing. We were, us and Newark were the first schools in all of the region to start at the modified level. We saw how popular it was at the high school level. We started at the modified level and now many schools have it. And so there's basketball and bowling and they did a little, they tried bocce. That didn't go over as well. And so now they're talking about, well, you want to that new sport, maybe flag football or something. I'm nervous about that notion, but we will see and of course support it because it is awesome. Our teams are so large for unified sports, we've had to add second teams because our benches were literally two rows deep, full of kids. And so just really a great thing. You may remember, we were the first school in all of Section 5 to start girls wrestling. We kind of blazed that path. These three female wrestlers were sectional champions, first sectional champions this past year. They won it, they went on to the state level and they all podiumed. We're looking out for really great things for this group. Girls wrestling is one of the fastest growing sports in the state of New York. And we're just, we should be proud as a school district to say that we kind of blazed that path for Section 5. Definitely proud of that. Many people aren't aware that we have an alternative school here. It services 8th through 12th graders and they graduate with Regents diplomas. If you were to survey every one of the graduates, there's usually 8 to 10, 8 to 12 kids per grade level. If you were to survey the graduates each year, I think they would almost unanimously tell you they wouldn't graduate without this program. It's very hands-on, interdisciplinary related. They, you can see they're out in nature. They're teaching younger kids. It's just a fantastic program. It's not a program that's for kids with behavioral issues. They have behavioral issues just like any other kid. It's really a program that's for students who maybe need a more supportive nurturing environment. Maybe they have some anxiety and things like that or social avoidance type stuff. And this gives them that supportive nurturing place where they really can thrive and do well. It's a great program. Last year for our high school musical, the awards haven't come out for this year, so that's what I'm talking about last year's. They do Stars of Tomorrow, which is this big award ceremony for all the school districts in the greater Rochester area. There's like 60 some schools there. They all perform a little bit from their show at this. It's amazing. I loved it. We were the only school of every single school that every lead got an excellence in acting award. We're the only school that every lead got an excellence in acting award at this adjudicated thing. But here's the kicker. We double cast. Both casts, every lead got excellence in acting. To me, that's just amazing to think we're the only school that got it, but both of our casts got it. Just, you know, our musicals are amazing and we're just really proud of the number of kids we put on the stage. We have three different honor societies. We have a business honor society that's up and coming. I'll talk more about that in a minute. We have a music honor society and we have our traditional national honor society. These students are so, so, so impressive. If you get the chance to interact with them and their aspirations and what they're doing, they are miles ahead of where I was when I was their age. They're just so globally aware and brilliant and just thoughtful. Just something, you know, I think we should be aware of. This is our second year holding a team job fair. We partner with local businesses who are hiring more people to work in the summer, students. And they come in table and our students come down during lunch and study hall. They go around, they learn about the different job opportunities in the community. Many of them are hired right there. And so the local employers love it. We love it. The families love it because their kids are working in the summer, making a little bit of money. But it's something we tried last year as a first, you know, just to see. And it was so successful, the demand was there to bring it back. And so I think we have a new tradition. We, we see great things happening. Alex was a National Merit Scholarship Seminologist because he scored so high on the PSATs. That's not just something that's given out freely. You really have to be top-notch and score super high compared to the nation. And he did, and so we're proud of him and his efforts. Our business department, I mentioned the Business National Honor Society. It was named the Department of the Year in the greater Rochester area. Because we're involved in a lot of things, and I'll talk a little bit why, more about why in a minute, but this department for us is growing exponentially. And I think they might even know what's happening next slide, but I'll get to it. I'll explain mine in a minute. But we're proud. They were the Department of the Year in the greater Rochester area. Mr. Kane shares that this is one of our largest selections of all-state musicians. We had a lot of really skilled students that were independently adjudicated and scored incredibly high on their instruments. Some of them multiple instruments. And so one of the biggest selections we've had, a really impressive group of students, some of whom will be returning. They're not even seniors yet. Taylor, what a great student. She was News 8's elite sport athlete. She, one person was picked from all Section 5 and she won it. She's a runner for us. She's multi-sexual champion for us. But what's remarkable about her is what she does outside of sports. She's one of the most kind, generous, thoughtful people you would ever meet. She created the entire video introductions for Athletic Hall of Fame inductees this year. It was all her production creating that. And that's what was shown and displayed when we introduced each Hall of Fame inductees in the ceremony, something that she created. And she's very humble and shy too, so she did not enjoy going on News 8 to get this award, but super deserving with her coach, Mr. Ward. Alex was given the News 8 Gold Dabble Award. These are parents of students in her class that nominate her just because of the loving environment that she creates in her room. It was really fun to surprise her that day. She was floored, shocked, really couldn't believe it. And when I was able to watch that, I thought, well, we have a lot of staff members that are deserving of that award, a lot. But Brian did a lot of the coordinating of that day and it was incredibly fun. And I tried to stay out of the way of the camera as much as I could, but if you watch the video back, it looks like I moved to get in front of the camera. I thought I was moving to get out of the way of it. It was embarrassing, but anyway, she's very deserving. Every fall sports team, every single one of them, all of them, were the Scholar-Athlete Team Award winners. That means 75% of their roster carried an average of 90 or above. Every single fall sports team that we have, really proud of that. I love this. I didn't know they were doing this. Our middle school students selected their favorite children's book and then recorded them reading those children's book right before the holidays so that when the primary elementary school kids went home for the holidays, if they didn't have someone to read them a book, they could watch it. And so they were taught how to watch the middle school kids reading their favorite picture book. I just thought that was really just a sweet thing for them to do. So business department, this is DAKA. These are future business leaders of America, basically is what they're looked at. So they go into these competitions every year to learn about character, leadership. Let me see. Leadership, business, being business savvy. They're put into these role-play scenarios that they have to react to on the spot and play it out. And so this is our group. They receive the recognition in Orlando for dry level because our membership has grown tremendously in three years that it's been in existence. I was lucky enough to be invited this year. I know Matt was invited last year. I went to the conference. These kids were unbelievable. So I encourage you to check out the conference. I'll go again if you'd like. You won't have to, you won't have to sit in this meeting. Our orchestras had silver and gold ratings in their all-state competitions. Really proud of that. Excuse me. Brand new science Olympiad. These, our team's small but mighty. Look at all the, look at all the medals, all the hardware they won. They really knocked it out of the park in their very first competition. It wasn't a full team, so we weren't able to qualify for the next level, but we were one point away from it with an incomplete team. And we couldn't compete in many of the competitions because our team was small. Our new teacher, he's Mr. Straub, he, look out for this team. This team's gonna be something we'll talk about next year. I know that, know about it for sure. Robotics, two awards this year, sustainability award for their environmental friendly approach and for how they're building the team in a sustainable financial way. And then judges award for their helping their competitors and really looking beyond themselves. And so really deserving group. Sorry for getting my voice back. This is Lindsay and Jeremy. They're two juniors for us. They are our president and vice president of our student government. They're also the vice president and president of the New York State Student Government. So when you look at the New York State organization, we have the president and vice president of it. That's pretty impressive, if you ask me. And Lindsay, we're about to go out publicly with this and share, she's one of 17 students in all of the United States and all of Africa that was selected for the Bezos Family Scholarship Program. So she'll spend a year, she's going out to Colorado this summer, but a year taking leadership courses and connecting with world leaders. Remember her name. She's, she's gonna do some amazing things. So we're really proud of her. Our absenteeism, the Rochester Business Journal, it obviously puts out a report and it looks at absenteeism. Of the 63 districts in the greater Rochester area, our absenteeism is the lowest. And I really believe that's because our staff makes this a place that kids feel supported and cared for. And they show up at a greater rate than any other district in the greater Rochester area. And that's something to be proud of. Also, there was a report over the summer that showed the responsible spending of districts in 492 districts in the state of New York. The 492 is the most responsible spending district. We rated 399 one of the most responsible spending districts in the state of New York. Something to be proud of. In the Rochester Business Journal, of the 63 districts, we're the 10th most affordable compared to the 63 districts. And that's based on funding, spending and burden on the taxpayer. And so we have a lot of success, but a lot of that we do in a really efficient and smart way. And so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Matt to talk about the budget.
So we're gonna have a budget hearing started here. I'm just going through the numbers of, excuse me, the 25, 26 budget. If you've seen the presentation we recorded earlier, or been in the community presentations, this is gonna look very familiar to you. So the very, first thing we want to discuss is the tax levy. So on this screen is the history of the tax levy since the tax cap. The blue line being what our tax cap calculation is and the green line and what we've actually gone out at. This year's tax cap is 3.37% and this budget proposes a 2.9% increase. On the revenue side, there's, our revenues really made up of two main areas, property taxes and state aid. Our property taxes make up approximately 59% of all of our revenue and the state aid makes up approximately 39%. So the 2.9% increase in property taxes is an increase of about $1.5 million, $1.525,000. The increase in state aid is $893,000. We're fortunate in that the minimum state aid increase this year for states was 2%. Because of the change in the foundation aid formula, the minor changes benefited our district and so we had slightly larger increase. So overall, the revenue budget will increase by $2,305,000 from year to year. Typically this time of year, you know, this is an exciting time where we can, you know, build programs and add staff. This is not a year that we're doing that. Due to our decline of enrollment, we've really been able to look at, continue to look at staffing and continue looking at rightsizing. So overall, across the district, a reduction of 15 FTEs, teaching and teaching assistants across the district. You'll notice that's across each of the buildings. Some in the primary elementary school, some in the middle school and some in the high school. This is no reduction in program and no individual loses their job because of these reductions, but there are reductions in staff to right-size the district to the student enrollment. The budget, when you look at our detailed budget, the line-by-line budget, you know, it's pages and pages. And when we present it for this, we have to show it in three parts. So we show in the administrative, the program and capital, very short summary. Administration is what you would picture with administration. It's gonna be anybody within the principals' offices, anybody within district office is gonna make up that cost. Program is the largest part of the budget, always will be. That's gonna be anything you picture in a classroom, desks, chairs and supplies. It's also, you know, teaching staff, the benefits and salaries and the support staff. And then capital's gonna be anything to do with our facilities, maintenance, our bonds or borrowing for any capital projects that have previously been done. So overall, the administration's increasing by $271,000 to about 7.87% of the budget. Programs increasing largest by $2,490,000. And overall, the budget's increasing from year to year by 2.5%. And budget would be $93,427,725 if. Each year, we can do a $100,000 capital project within the budget. And the way this works is if the budget is approved, we can do work up to $100,000 and the state will aid us the following year for 73.2% of the total costs that we spend. This year's proposed project is exterior doors and frames for the primary elementary school. This is the same project that we're doing in the current year. Continue working on the increase in safety and security with the district. So overall, when we look at our budget, on the left hand in the green column is the overall budget, a 2.5% increase with the appropriation being $93,427,725. And on the right column, that's the revenues as to how we're, you know, covering the expenses. So the tax levy makes up, as I said earlier, 59%. State aid makes up 39%. And everything else is approximately 2% of total revenues. You'll notice the federal miscellaneous is $1,623,000. The federal portion of that is just Medicaid, which is about $120,000 from year to year. And then we use reserves to cover the balance, which is $1,676,000. So each year, we also try to, this time of year, what a tax bill might look like. This is difficult because we have only tentative assessment roles and we don't have finalized equalization rates. So really, we don't have the information we need to develop what the tax levy will be next year. So what we do is we just base it on last year's tax rolls, knowing that assessments may increase due to buildings or reassessments and equalization rates will change. So on a $150,000 home to orient yourself, in the left column is what we presented at this time last year. The middle column's what we're currently, or what the actual was when we set the rates in August. And the proposed is what we're anticipating for next year at this point. So on a $150,000 home, last year when we presented, we estimated the tax rate to be $15.53 per thousand for a tax bill of about $1,805 after start. When the tax bill was actually, the levy was actually set and we set the tax collection, the tax rates, the tax rate actually came down to $14.22, so significantly more, you know, once we had the updated information. So a $150,000 home was $1,629. So this year, a 2.9% increase on that tax rate is where we come up with the $14.63. And overall, a tax bill after start would be about $1,715 or an increase of about $86 for that home. We, I'll get it, we'll hear. I also show each year, you know, we have different assessed values across the different municipalities. So what would a $200,000, $300,000, $400,000 home, what would that tax bill look like and what the increase would be assuming a $14 assessment to be set on tax rate, knowing each person has a different value in their properties. So each year, the gray is what we've presented at this time of year using our estimate and the green is what has been actually, you know, approved once we've calculated it. So you can see each year, we're very conservative this time of year using last year's assessed values to come up with a tax rate. And then when we adopt that, that rate typically comes in lower. I would expect that to happen again. Maybe not with the significant decreases that we've seen over many years due to reassessments, but I would expect it to be more. But $14.63 is what we are currently using in all our publications and presentations. So whenever we create a budget, obviously we're creating a budget for the following year, but we're also a multi-year budget. We're looking long-term at the, you know, the district's financial wellbeing, continue offering the best programming that we can. And so we have to always look at future years. The state, how long can they continue fully funding foundation aid? And what does that future growth look like? Especially if there's any downturn in the economy. Tax cap limits, so you know, we have the CPI or 2%. So, you know, we really have a limit on the tax levy increase from year to year. Health insurance rates, our health insurance is obviously a large part of the budget. And this year, we're seeing an overall increase of about 12% on our active health insurance. And we're seeing that trend going forward, you know, with that 10 to 12 or higher percentage increase from year to year, which will, you know, be difficult to, you know, to work around. And then our over 65 retiree plans, we're in a great consortium where we are saving a lot of money compared to community rates. But unfortunately, Medicare has changed and those rates are going up significantly on the community side. When our agreement and consortium ends, we expect our rates to more than double for our health insurance, which we would start seeing in the 26, 27 school year. Also, electric buses, this is a little bit, we still don't have the information. Current state laws, all new buses need to be purchased, starting in 2027, need to be electric. And by 2035, all buses need to be converted to electric. So you can't have any diesel vehicles within the school district. And there are significantly higher costs and there's, you know, infrastructure costs to that as well. Within the governor's budget, we still don't have any details, or excuse me, within the state budget, we still don't have any details. The state adopted the budget very late last week. There's a discussion there, it's a bullet that says that there's a four-year waiver. We don't know who qualifies or how to qualify or any of those things. So once we have that information, you know, we can, we'll be able to, you know, learn more about it and be able to, you know, educate you as to what our options are. So there's also, besides the proposition one of the budget, there's also multiple propositions within this budget. The first ones are our traditional transportation buzzer proposition. This is diesel and gas buses. Overall, this is nine total buses, seven are traditional yellow buses, big yellow buses and two SUV buses to help with our out-of-district place students. And we use transportation reserve and fund balance and the overall cost is $1,303,815. We also have included this year our proposition three for transportation. This is for electric buses. As you can see, these buses are significantly more expensive. So two buses, one 60-passenger wheelchair, one 70-passenger bus. And the cost of those buses is just under $940,000. And on this proposition, we use transportation reserve, grants and fund balance. So as part of this, we've been awarded a grant of $449,000 for the buses if that were to be approved to offset the additional costs. And then we've been awarded $110,000 in grants to cover the charge of stations and setup. And, you know, the reason we went through that is to take advantage of, you know, the state grants while they're still available and for our operations department, our transportation department, to be able to use these buses, you know, in different weather and, you know, try to operate them, learn them before we have to transition all the buses year over year. Proposition four is establishing a capital reserve. This is a 10, can be funded for up to 10 years and up to $10 million. This is as part of the capital project that was approved in December. We used the majority of our capital reserves above. We don't have another retirement of that until the early 2040s. And so any future work that needs to be done with the district will be, need to be state aid and reserves to be able to do that work. So looking long-term, this is a way to put money into a reserve, a savings account that can be used for capital work that might be needed over the next 15 years, any planned or unexpected needs. And proposition five is the funding for Wood Library. Wood Library is requesting a $20,000 increase as part of their budget. And their tax rate will increase their estimating on a $150,000 home by 83 cents per year. And this, as you may recall, Wood Library has its own board. They set their rate, or excuse me, their levy. We collect the taxes on their behalf and pass those funds on to them. There's one Board of Education seat. It's Julianne Miller's position on the board and she will be the only one on the ballot this year. And the budget vote is a week from tomorrow, September 9 p.m. at our normal locations. And we encourage everybody to show up and let their voice be heard as to how they want to move forward. We started a few minutes late, so I'm not sure if there's any questions. We could field, we can spend a little time doing that and maybe ask questions.
Just to clarify that, the number on the electric buses, the 996, is that before or after the, or?
It's gross cost, yeah. Our grants were in the range of $400,000?
$449,000.
Is it buses only or all, because you almost said all school vehicles. When the new law passes, isn't all school vehicles?
Yeah.
Or are they just buses? So that means our maintenance guys, everyone has to drive an electric vehicle?
I believe that's the case, yeah. Yeah, we're still waiting on the details. And as Matt said, that actually have, I found that I was, we had a summary report from our advocate at the state on this. And in reference, it doesn't get into those details like you're saying, John, but it does reference the two, two-year extenders that districts can apply for. And the reason you would apply for those is perhaps the lack of availability of a zero emission bus. Perhaps you need more infrastructure support or there's, there's a lack of availability of state, federal funds. So if you could prove those things, they could offer an extension, but it goes on. I've gotta find, if you ask for an extension, then you're going to have some state representative on your campus working with you to get you up to speed and, you know, monitoring that you're really working towards, you're not just asking for, you know, an extension. And if they're here and they're seeing we're not making progress, and we can ask for a second extension, but we have to prove that there's this lacking, this lacking areas, right? I don't, I still think there's time for this to get kicked down the road, but, I mean, they didn't budge. They didn't, they did not budge. I thought we'd see some movement here. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you. All right. So this is a meeting that's designated as a public comments meeting. And before we start, I'll just reach in how public comments work. We have two people signed up. So the Board of Education invites you, the members of our community, to feel comfortable and sharing matters of interest or concern that you might have. Concerns raised during public comments will not be responded to or discussed during the meeting. Those items brought to the attention of the board during this time may be taken under consideration for future response or action. We ask that you refrain from discussing specific personnel or students. Individual comments will be limited to three minutes and a total time for this portion of the agenda will be limited to 15 minutes. Deb and I will be your timekeepers. Please be advised that members of the audience record us and you during public comments. Please begin by stating your name and the name of the school district you reside in for the record, and then I'll start the timer. So the first person I have listed is Bill Nostick.
Well, after seeing the presentation and all that, I don't have any question.
Okay. It's great to see you. Parent of many former children who went through this, so it's old times, great, I hope all of them. Individual comments will be limited to three minutes and a total time for this portion of the agenda will be limited to fifteen minutes. Deb and I will be your timekeepers. Please be advised that members of the audience record us and you during public comments. Please begin by stating your name and the name of the school district you reside in for the record, and then I'll start the timer. So the first person I have listed is Bill Nostick.
Well, after seeing the presentation and all that, I don't have any question.
Okay, it's great to see you. A parent of many former children who, I think, himself, like, old times, great, I hope all is well. And then Danny Heinz? Nope, okay, wow.
That was easy.
You gotta tell me before I get there. Maybe I'll go, I'll go. Alright, and we will just keep going. We have minutes up for approval. Our last promotions, please. Beth Milton, questions or comments? All in favor? That carries unanimously, thank you. And Warrens, Megan Andrew Noah? First Megan, second John, questions or comments? All in favor? That carries unanimously, thank you. And Macy, you are up.
Alright, so over the past couple weeks, we had two big inductions for NHS and CHINA, and they were both very successful. And I was so excited to see all the new exciting bases that we're gonna carry in all the clubs that I was so proud to be a part of. Nice to be with the Mental Health Walk. It's this Saturday, eleven to two, and that's through Work to Do Well. I'm really excited to be there. I remember that before. For Student Government, we celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week with pizza, and they loved that. I have a lot of emails saying how nice it was to have everybody there all at the same time to just share lunch and talk about their experience teaching. We had Triple E Day, so that's En-vous, Spent, Employment, and Enrollment. And all seniors were invited to come down and take a picture and grab a cookie and celebrate our features. And then May eighth was like the overall IPR show, including the juniors. And I was so impressed with all of the work that they did. It was amazing. Those are all the things that I have. Thank you.
Great.
Macy, I believe the art, there's an art show still displayed for about another week in the upper atrium. If any Board members are around, want to check it out, really impressive stuff, yeah.
So at this time of year, we traditionally honor a super special person up at the table here, and that is our student rep. Because this is possibly the last meeting our student rep will attend. You're welcome to attend the reps, we want to be absolutely sure you could be here. We have the very best students as our student reps. They are so well-informed, they work so hard, they're so incredibly proud of their educations. And they do a phenomenal job presenting, and Macy has just set the bar even higher than it's ever been before. I had to pick two words to describe Macy. I would say poised and positive. Macy, at her very first meeting, we had an experience I haven't had in twenty-something years on the board where someone in the audience couldn't hear, and it felt like shouted to us to speak louder. And it was totally my fault because I had not asked her to turn on her microphone. And so she just turned on her microphone and kept going, and then caught herself because she realized that that person hadn't heard everything she'd said, and she just started all over again and kept going. She was unfazed. I was undone. As poised as Macy is. So if you notice, we're all wearing blue up here, because would you like to tell us where you'll be going in the fall?
Oh, yeah, I'm going to Tennessee.
I usually get the flowers in the school color, but the yellow spoke to us because you are pure sunshine. A blue back, just to ride along.
Thank you for everything.
That looks really lucky.
Thank you.
Do you want to tell us what you're planning on doing at GEMC or is that too much right now?
Sure, no, biochem on the pre-med drought. I'm looking to specialize in dermatology once I get to med school.
Great. You can come back and talk with us about super prevention.
Right.
That is all I have, and you are up.
I just have something brief. I mentioned the guidance document that we received from our advocates. One of the things I just need to have on your radar, and I'm sure it is already, it's been all over in the news, as part of the state budget was the governor's internet-enabled device ban language. And so a little bit of, just pieces of information to be aware of, that we have to have a policy by August first indicating that it is a bell-to-bell ban. And when they say bell-to-bell or during instructional day, that includes lunch, passing time, no cell phones. And some of the requirements include, we have to post this ban very visibly around the district. We have to let families, parents or guardians, caregivers know at least one way they can get a hold of their child in an emergency, because they won't be able to have their device. We have to provide them all with a location to securely store their device if they bring it to school. It could be a locker at the middle school and academy or fifth grade, but we do have kids in the elementary and perhaps, I'm guessing, even the primary who bring cell phones. And so we have to have a secure locking way for them if they bring them. And we can't suspend any students for disobeying this policy. They were clear about that. And we also have to provide an opportunity for, before adopting this policy, for feedback from local stakeholders, such as, we have to consult them, employee labor unions, each bargaining unit in the school buildings, parents and students. I honestly don't know what we're consulting them for, because there's a law that says what we're supposed to be doing. I share that because I really don't know. We need way more information on this, but we have between now and August first to pull that together. And it feels like a lot, if I'm being honest. I have my own personal opinions about this law, which I've shared many times. But I guess that really doesn't matter from a lawmaker's standpoint. So I just want you to be aware of it. It's gonna move fast and there's gonna be emotions involved with it. I don't personally want us to spend eighty thousand dollars on pouches. I think that's a bit large waste of money. And if you survey our staff at the middle and high school and ask them, because we do survey them every year, what are your biggest obstacles in education? They don't even list cell phones anymore. But now we're gonna have to put all this energy into it, which is an item that isn't even listed anymore as an issue from our staff.
Is it just cell phones? Is it watches?
Internet-enabled devices, watches, cell phones. Now, they can carry with them a non-internet-enabled device, like a cellphone that's not internet. But then we have to designate someone who confirms that it's a non-internet-enabled device. Which you can see, that's not, it's not feasible.
Genitological.
Oh, feasible, we got it.
So a related question to that. Sometimes individuals use their athletic watches and other things for medical purposes or, right?
There are provisions for that, IEP or five oh four-related health-related instances that are very specific and legitimate, is the way I'm reading this so far. Yes, good question, great questions, and I have answers to a couple of them. So I just wanted to make you aware that this is fast-moving and going to be pretty.
Milk down.
You're not right timing.
I'm positive cell phones was not an issue with Macy, at all, ever. Alright, that's all I had.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. This evening, our curriculum area lead teacher for counseling, Leanne Ducharme, is here. She's here to give us an update as part of our comprehensive counseling plan. There's an annual update to the Board of Ed relative to a range of different activities that go into achieving the components of our comprehensive counseling plan. So Leanne's here to share a few of those highlights, and if you have any questions at the end, she'll be happy to take that.
That was last year's report.
It was so good, we want you to do it twice.
Hello, Leanne? I don't know, I was just looking as I saw the update, I was like, is that the wrong one? No, well, the funny thing is, my computer went down and I'm trying to find it now, so. Okay.
Debbie's been dealing with tax issues today, unfortunately.
Debbie's still at home. I'll just get us started while she brings that up and then.
Are you sure, Leanne? We can pause for a couple of minutes.
Yeah, I'll get it, Leanne, here, hang on.
Yeah, I don't. Although it is a beautiful evening, so.
It is, I was already outside for a little while before I came. Twenty-four, twenty-five, Leanne? Here, let me see, I just. Because that's how it's labeled. Do you want to come over here with the? Oh, shit. So I turned it off, it's been a can. It's labeled as twenty-four, twenty-five. Is that the one?
We've had IEP in our office almost all day today because of tax issues.
Should've called like a sensor reader.
I know, I know. I think she threatened to throw her laptop out the window at one point. They are, but they're district issue. And I, and I think what we're gonna find in the, they're not a messaging device per se, like, so we can filter what kids are getting on them at school. Email, yeah. Yeah.
I know.
Cellphone, yeah. Well, it works on Chromebooks. But that's gross.
Alright, so we can get started. Sorry about that, sorry about that. So tonight I'm gonna highlight some things that the counseling department has done throughout this year, K-12. So on each year, we'd like to share out some of the work that's been happening with counselors and mental health staff across the district. So to start, before we get into some of the items, I just want to mention that a lot of what we do is embedded in what's called the mindsets and behaviors of student success. This is developed nationally, but New York State has adopted that as sort of our guidelines for the work that we do as school counselors. And it really describes the attitude, skills that we want our students to have to be successful academically, career and college-wise, as well as socially and emotionally. So it's gonna touch on some of the things we do, touches on things like self-awareness, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. So first I'd like to start with talking about our community partnerships. So I'm highlighting two tonight, but we have many partnerships, as you probably know, throughout the district. And those partnerships that we have with community organizations are essential, I think, in a lot of the work that we do for our students. So the first one I'm gonna highlight is Safe Harbors of the Finger Lakes. That's an organization here that comes into health classes at the middle school and works with our health teacher in conjunction with our school counselors. Ruby Cunningham, this year has been going in seventh grade classes, she does two lessons. Eighth grade classes, she comes in and does four lessons. And it's all about healthy relationships and also internet safety. Because we know that our students, the internet is a broad world, right? And so just educating students on the things that are happening on the internet, how to be safe and how to be smart in terms of healthy relationships. Safe Harbors has also come to the academy and worked in our twelve-one-one class. Very similar with those kind of conversations. Oftentimes with our twelve-one-one students, they'll talk to you about, well, my friend that I have online, right? And so then digging deeper and understanding that maybe that's not a friend. And so Safe Harbors is able to bring a lesson in that is at their level for them to understand in terms of how to be safe using, whether it's a gaming device, internet, and so on. And they also partner with our primary elementary and they do body safety lessons for the younger students. Another amazing partnership we have is our co-located services through Ontario County Mental Health. This has really grown since we initiated it, I believe we're in our third year of having that partnership. Cassie Webster is the provider that we work with. And for those of you that aren't familiar, the point of the co-location with Ontario County Mental Health was that we were seeing an increase of difficulty for parents to be able to get their child outside counseling if they desire. And there were a lot of hurdles in the way. So it was things like their work schedule wouldn't allow them to be able to take their child to an appointment. Maybe they didn't have transportation. So the district talked with Ontario County Mental Health on how to sort of remove those barriers. So Cassie is at the middle school one day a week and at the academy two days a week. This year, you can see the student's caseload that she's seeing. She did have, I think it was fifty-five or fifty-six students this year, but some have exited services because they've achieved their goal. We would love to see this expand to even the primary elementary, because again, trying to remove barriers for families so that if they desire to get support for their kids, they would be able to. And that's all through the family's insurance. So it's no cost to the district, we're just providing a location for that service to occur. And they are, have expanded to other districts as well. So Cassie was just telling me they're trying to get up and running in Midlake's and they were in Honeyway. So I think the county is looking to expand in meetings in a lot of districts. Next, I'd like to touch on our MTSS process that we have here in the district. I want to highlight the Tier Two meetings, because that's really where we see our counselors playing the biggest role. At the academy, we call them Tier Two meetings. At the middle school, it's IST, which is instructional support team meetings. And really, when, it pulls a whole MTSS process together. And these teams meet one time a week. And they really dig into the data for what you see there, social, emotional learning, academics, behavior, and attendance. So each week, we run a report out of our student management system to look at students that might be struggling and how can we support them. The beauty of the Tier Two meetings is it's made up of school counselor, school psychologist, social worker, assistant principal, and the IST teacher. So that is what we call that, those individual children's team. And when we go through the data, we identify what the need is. Is it a student that has been struggling with a chronic attendance? Is it a student who was doing okay academically, but now we're starting to see a dip into their grades? I love that we're doing this now, we've been doing it for a few years now, because prior to, the counselor did this alone. So as a high school counselor, I would get the five-week report cards and I would go through them myself for my students. I would figure out who might be struggling. Then I would try to call the parent or I would call the student out to develop a plan. And the same with attendance. I personally would just grab my attendance report. But having this team approach has been amazing because, first of all, I don't feel alone in thinking, is this the right choice? Or is this the right intervention for this child? I have a whole team that's processing it together. But also sometimes when we're doing this work, we can sometimes not see all the options. So having the whole team there, they're coming at it from a different lens, and it really helps, I have found, to be able to problem-solve, brainstorm interventions, put those interventions in place. And then I'm not the only person tracking that student either, so we have a team that would be tracking those students. So this has been a real plus for what we do and the work we do every day with our students. Next, I'd like to touch on transition activities. So I'm just gonna highlight two here that are upcoming, but we do many in terms of trying to support our students. I mean, it really focuses on fostering a sense of belonging for our children. So the Wolf Pack camp is in July, and it's the transition activity for our fifth graders going into the middle school. So that's a big transition for those students, because they are moving into another building. And it can be scary. So they get to meet the staff, they check out the building, they'll get a copy of their schedule, they'll walk around to check out where their classes are. And this, last year, I was talking with Chris Vandyne about how that camp goes every year, and she said they struggled with some attendance in trying to get all the incoming fifth graders to attend in the past. So last year, they really tried to brainstorm, how could they increase the attendance? And what they did was they partnered with the transportation department. The transportation department already had buses going out for summer school. So what they did was they adjusted the start time of the Wolf Pack and they used those same bus route that was going out for summer school to pick up the fifth graders. And she said that their attendance went up and they had eighty percent participation last year. So they're gonna do that again this year in terms of trying to get the students to the school for that activity. And then for the eighth grade Q and A, this is always a fun one. We are taking twenty-four seniors and freshmen to the middle school on May fourteenth to talk to advisories. So they're combining advisories and they're gonna talk to the eighth grade students about their transition to the high school. And that is always neat, because the students, they share their own experiences about when they came to the high school. They give tips on what helped them in terms of, you know, things that they wish they maybe knew when they were an eighth grader coming to the academy. And now that they've had the experience, they can share those experiences. And they also stress things like the importance of time management and also like understanding that you're starting your high school transcript, which is important for those goals that you might have after high school. So again, that's gonna be up and coming. So, again, that's gonna be up and coming, um, and those, uh, high schools that go down, I always like to go back and see their old teachers too, so it's, it's a real nice event that we have. Primary elementary school counseling. So I'm gonna highlight two, um, items that they have done this spring. The Power of Play, you guys should be familiar with, because I know they just, um, were at your board meeting, and you had that opportunity to learn a little bit more about that. Um, the Career Week, um, was in the beginning of March. I'm not sure if any of you were able to go and participate in any of the events, but it's really all around self-exploration and allowing these students to try to, um, explore, um, be curious, and, um, try to figure out what is important to them in terms of what they might want to do for a career. So there was a hands-on, um, career exploration where, um, a few of the sixteen career clusters were highlighted, and students could, um, act out the jobs. I actually had the opportunity to go down and, um, participate in that with some of the students, and it was really neat. They had stations set up for, um, to pretend to be a veterinarian. There was one for a florist, a travel agent, um, the Starbucks one was a hit. Um, and really, the kids were able to, uh, self-select and, um, just kind of take on the role. And what I found amazing was just watching, uh, leadership roles come out naturally out of some of the students. So, um, taking the orders at the Starbucks car and, um, cleaning up and all of the things that come along with it. They also did a fifth-grade senior speak. So our high school counselors took seniors down to talk to the fifth graders. Again, piece of that transition, um, to talk about, um, their own personal future plans. So the seniors would share out if they were gonna go to the military, or go to the world of work, or go to college, and they talked about, um, giving advice to their fifth-grade selves. So again, trying to, um, build that, a piece of that transition. And then the Power of Play, as I mentioned, you guys, um, had the opportunity to participate with that, but I did want to touch on it because we think it's a vital, um, a vital part of childhood development. It teaches the social skills, the emotional skills, cognitive, physical skills, um, and it's crucial for their growth, um, for the students as they progress. And, um, the elementary counselors wanted me to highlight, these are, um, I talked about the middle school and the high school in Tier Two in intervention and how we support students. These would fall under what we call Tier One Services, so services for all students, trying to expose, uh, students to that, um, world of work and self-discovery, if you will. Next, I'm gonna highlight our CACC. Um, again, kind of going back with the topic of transition. So Heather Pollak, our counselor there, um, took the seniors over to FLCC for a visit to campus. Um, and this was exciting because, um, we don't often see our students that go through the CACC then continue on to pursue college, although we believe that they are capable and they could do it. Um, they might not always believe it in themselves, right? So she was able to, um, arrange a tour, they got a tour of campus, they met with an admissions counselor. Um, the admissions counselor explained to them that you don't have to go full-time. So you can go and just take one class, see how you do, see if you like it. Um, they have a career center there, so if a student wasn't sure what they wanted to, to major in or study, they could get help with that. And they also got to, um, check out the dining hall and go check out the dorms like you would on a typical college visit. Um, and we often know sometimes parents can't always arrange those visits, so this was a great opportunity that, um, she had to be able to take the students over there for that. Um, the other item I wanted to highlight was their kindergarten visits, which you might be familiar with. Um, she was excited and, um, wanted me to share this one because she feels, um, Heather was saying, this provides a mentoring opportunity for a lot of the students that attend CACC. She as the counselor feels like they don't always have a lot of self-confidence, right? So, sort of, even like this, standing up here in public speaking, it doesn't come easy, but it comes with time, right? Um, and she said that, um, when the kindergartners come, the, the students at CACC, they, everything about them and their demeanor and their confidence changes, uh, for the positive. So, um, they do a lot of activities with them when they come and visit. One of them is they read books to them. And she said you will see students that, um, might not read aloud in their English class, but then they're volunteering to read a book to their kindergarten kids. So she said that, um, that activity boosts their confidence as well. So, again, um, another great opportunity for our students. And last but not least, um, I know Macy mentioned it, but I'd like to highlight our Mental Health Walk. So we do have a club at the academy called Work to Be Well, um, and they do a lot of, um, activities throughout the school, just on personal wellness, um, for our students. But they are the, um, club that is organizing our Mental Health Awareness, um, Walk. And, um, it has progressed over the years. The first year we did it, um, we tried to advertise, we had some turnout, but not like we had hoped, but then each year it has started to grow. So, um, this year, all the money raised is going to Safe Harbors, which is one of our partnerships here in the community of the Finger Lakes, and, um, I wanted to mention that last year, our, um, and the students pick the organization that they would like the money raised to go to. So last year, it was, um, Family Promise of the Finger Lakes, and they raised twenty-seven hundred dollars for that organization. So, um, I'm hoping, fingers crossed, we're gonna have good weather, um, and that we will have a good turnout. So we invite you all to come and do some laps on the track for, um, Mental Health Awareness.
Is that the high school?
It is at the high school, yes. Yeah.
Is Link Crew still a thing for freshmen?
It is, yep. Yep, so the Link Crew is our freshman orientation, um, for the eighth grade to come to the high school. That's in August. I'm not sure if it's still called Link Crew.
I don't either, but it changed the name, didn't it?
I don't remember.
I know, so Link Crew is like a, um, a program, and I, we've gone away from like the licensed program, but we still do an orientation, so it might just be called freshman orientation if not, but yes, it does exist.
Any other questions for Leanne? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Please thank all the counselors for us to appreciate your work. Thank you, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Alright, we have a consensus agenda and supplemental questions, please, then any questions or comments? All over. That carries unanimously, thank you. Milton, audit, please.
So our audit committee met on Friday morning at seven AM. We had a claims auditor quarterly report from our calling claims auditor Jill Earlyard. We wish Jill well in her next adventure. Um, we did have, we spent most of our meeting with a pre-audit discussion. This is with, um, our outside auditor, Tom Zuber, and then Matt gave us a update on the internal audit focus area. Um, this was a clean audit. There were two corrective actions recommended, one which will make our lives a lot easier, so that was, that was a positive. And then, again, also an update on our five-year reserve plan, which the Board will see in June.
Great, thank you. I don't have any recommendations. You're most correct. Okay. Anything else? Right, approval motion to adjourn. Jen and Beth, all in favor? Right, thank you, everybody, thank you.